Corresponding procedure, 1430, board procedure. Public testimony rules are: one person speaks at a time, comments need to be addressed to the board, please adhere to the time limit, you'll get a 30-second yellow caution light warning, and two minutes goes very, very fast. The focus of the comments should be on the issues and solutions that you signed up for. The majority of the time must be spent on the topic you signed up for. No racial slurs, personal insults, ridicule or threats will be allowed, and this one's important: no comments regarding personnel matters or naming Seattle Public Schools personnel. If you've come with a righteous complaint, figure out a way to do it respectfully without breaking the rules because I will gavel you down and ask you to leave the podium. Please don't make me use it. No comments regarding those. All signs brought to the meeting are also subject to these ground rules, and I see no problem with the beautiful signs in the front row. What a surprise, librarians. Could you please call the first three speakers, and if the speakers could line up, once they are called, it would assist us in moving this meeting along. Thank you so much.
First up for public testimony this evening, we have Ronan Axtell, followed by Chris Jackins, followed by Sabrina Burr.
I am here on behalf of Ingram High School, and I'm a freshman there. I'm also a member of the Associated Student Body. Through my three quarters of school at Ingram, I've absolutely loved it. The inclusivity of the school is amazing, as my co-schoolgoer Liam talked about. We have all-gender bathrooms and all kinds of people whose interests and all people's interests are respected and given a voice with over 60 clubs. I went out for golf, a sport I'd been playing for less than a year, and got varsity opportunities. I got varsity opportunities with tennis and basketball as well. Ingram has a culture of inclusivity. This does not always reach the classroom, though. Of the 112 IB diploma candidates in the class of 2018, only one is African-American. Seventeen percent of Ingram is African-American, yet African-Americans are only represented in the IB program at a rate of .0 or 0.89 percent. This is unacceptable. We are, however, making strides. Through the tireless work of our administrators, we have established the SSC, or Student Success Center. This is a center strictly for freshmen, where they can come in and get snacks if they're hungry during or after school. They also offer tutoring after school every single day. The fact that students somewhere, the fact that somewhere students always feel welcome and can go help, get help with their homework is an anomaly is not good. Ingram High School is one of the, if not only the, high school in Seattle with this program. It is designed to stop people from falling through the cracks in our school system. I do not believe that this is enough. I believe that all people should be able to rise up through the cracks, and that all demographics should be equally represented in all of our programs. Thank you very much.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On the guiding principles for the BEX-5 capital levy, five points. Number one, the principles refer to "preservation of district investments." Number two, this contrasts with the district's proposal to demolish a school building at Wing Luke that the district paid $6 million to construct only 12 years ago. Number three, the district also needs to preserve playground space. Instead, the district has been approving numerous projects that shrink playgrounds. Number four, by such actions, the district is inviting the public to vote no on the proposed February levy. Number five, the board report states that "formal community engagement was not conducted to develop these principles." Please slow down, please vote no. On the superintendent employment agreement, six points. Number one, on May 20th, 2015, the school board voted to accept a $2.7 million anonymous athletic program matching grant. Number two, the board has not asked the finalist candidate for superintendent to give a public pledge to not accept employment from this secret donor. Number three, the current superintendent gave such a public pledge, as did all board members present at the May 20th, 2015 meeting. Number four, however, all current board members, except for one, have not given such a pledge. Number five, this appears to be an ethical conflict of interest to then not be requiring the same pledge from the finalist candidate for superintendent. Number six, I asked that these six board members recuse themselves from the vote today until they have resolved this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Jackins, I'd like to respond to the latter part of your testimony. Each and every one of these board members disclosed their potential and real conflicts of interest in January 2018, which I think addresses your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And, as you know, I followed that, and I don't think that covered it. So that's why I'm bringing it up again today. Thank you.
Next up, after Sabrina Burr, we will have Anna Marshall, followed by Emily Mitchell and Lexi Ralph.
You guys do a lot of hard work, and I don't think often enough we thank you for what you do right. When we were on the superintendent search, a lot of people gave you pushback as to how you weren't listening to community, and yada, yada, yada. You were very clear that you were listening and you heard, but you were firm in the process in what you guys decided as school board directors. The process that you did gave the outcome that I think that was your intent, and I just want to thank you. The other thing that I noticed is this process, as our school board directors, has brought you guys closer, and that's something that benefits the whole district. So first off, I just really want to applaud you. Thank you for finding a great future superintendent for us, and thank you for the tireless work you do, often not getting "thank you" for the things that you get right. So I wanted to say that. The other topic I want to talk about is our family support workers, and I believe for our families, they are glue. But I do not believe that they are valued in this district for what they do, and I also believe that there's a racial overture, and we're not following our own equity policy. Most of the people who are family support workers are people of color. Most of the people who they serve are people of color or people who are in lower economic means or crisis in their life. And we don't put the same value on them, but summer before last, at Roadmap, when we had 60 people from this district, not only did we recognize the great work that they do in buildings, the great work that they do for our district, they need to be teaching a lot around family engagement and how they engage with our critical families, and we need to use an equity lens and take the racism out of that position and make sure we have them in as many schools as possible because they're a critical part of the great work that this district's doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. I'm a Thornton Creek parent with a first grader and a middle schooler who graduated from Thornton Creek, and I'm here to request an audit of the district's process for hiring our new principal. This could be done and addressed in the corrective action plan for past employees. The hiring process was not aligned with board policies, nor with the email that parents and staff received describing what would happen. Here was our process. Some parents and staff received an email on March 9th kicking off a timeline that had started in mid-February. We had only days to pull together an interview committee and some selection criteria. We had no meaningful guidance from the district. Next, parents received a very confusing and off-putting survey from the district. We were not allowed to submit any interview questions, although other schools hiring principals this year were. The interview process was expedited and opaque, and there is no evidence that Thornton Creek's specific needs were considered at any point in the process. It is not clear that our staff on the interview committee felt safe during and after the process. I understand that they have requested a meeting even before the hiring decision was made, and that they've sought union representation. The district's tone-deaf email announcing the hiring decision listed their generic priorities, but none of our community's specific needs. Rather than provide clarifying information, district staff called a parent on our site council and said, "Tell your parents to stop calling and writing." Whoever becomes Thornton Creek's new principal will be welcomed. But before then, we need the district to address this very rogue process, and at a minimum, we need answer to these two questions. How is a man with less than five years of certified experience more qualified than a woman with two decades? Why is the selected candidate the right person to lead our large and growing Creative Approach Options School? Thank you.
Lexi? After Lexi, we will have Matt Mitchell, followed by Manuela Sly and Christine Cornell.
Hi, I'm Lexi Ralph. I'm a parent of two middleers, middle schoolers, and a PTSA president at Eagle Staff Middle School, and I'm here today to express my concerns about overcapacity issues that are now upon us in our, well, first year and second year of operation. The building was originally designed for 1,000 middle school students, but as a result of a post-design decision to co-locate Lichten Springs K-8 in one wing, we have 160 K-8 students in one wing, 720 middle schoolers in the other two wings, and shared common spaces. It's been tight this year, and sharing has not been as smooth as one would like. Next year, we anticipate to have another 100 students in the middle school. We will be overcapacity. It's going to be very squishy, there's not much else we can do, probably looking at portables on-site, nobody's very happy about that. I'm sure there are other suggestions that are going to arise in the next little while, and we're looking to the board for guidance on those. The following year, we're going to have probably another 100 students coming in, which means we're going to be looking at some student reassignment plans again. We're going to be looking at maybe boundaries or HCC pathways or something. I'm here today to implore you to start the process now. We know this is going to be an issue, and it doesn't have to be something that we wait until a week before next year's open enrollment to address. There are a lot of people wondering what's going on. We just went through this, we just went through the boundaries issue, we just went through the assignment plan. Please, I'm asking you, I'm begging you, communicate openly, engage families, engage staff, let's figure this out as soon as possible so that we can get the ball rolling and make sure everybody knows where things lie, because we do not have space for 1,000 students at our school. We're going to have 1,000 students this year, and it's going to be tight. We definitely won't be able to have any more than that going forward, so please help us both this year going forward, so you don't make the staff all have to decide who's going to get what, and then going forward, let's get the plans going right now. Thank you.
Christine Cornell? After Christine, we'll have Marty Breck Hutchins and Tuz Chambers.
Okay, so our testimony is a joint testimony, but our spots are not next to each other, so we're going to have a fun little intermission in there for you guys.
Hi, my name is Christine Cornell.
And my name is Isabel Dunaway.
We are seniors at the Center School, and we would like to speak to you on the subject of educational tracking.
School tracking is inherently unjust. It is de facto modern-day segregation. Aside from its immorality, tracking is also an ineffective educational policy for improving student performance because it fails to serve students of all racial, racial and class backgrounds equally. As a high school senior who is heading to college next year to become a teacher, issues of education are very important to me. I have been paying attention to my own experiences and observing what seems to be working or not working for my fellow students. We are here today to share our experience and encourage you to consider that instead of trying to make gifted programs more inclusive, you should focus on making all of our classes more effective for a diversity of students. As you know, in recent years, tracked programs such as the Highly Capable Cohort Program, HCC, have not reflected the diversity of Seattle School District as a whole. Although Black students make up approximately 16% of the district's population, in 2017, only around 1% of HCC students were Black. While there are many causes of this racial disparity, they certainly include some pretty fundamental flaws of educational tracking. Although all students technically have the opportunity to test into the program, sorry, test into the program, students growing up in traditionally more enriched educational environments will naturally have an advantage in early years. Using that early advantage, track those students into the educational fast lane locks in and expands their privilege. The result is the disturbing racial student performance gaps we are seeing in the Seattle School District today. This unofficial segregation is a vicious cycle of oppression. The racial disparity is, in tracked programs, makes them an unwelcoming or unattractive choice for underrepresented students who do test in. If the goal of such a program is to challenge the most academically capable students, but many minority students don't feel comfortable accepting the opportunity, the district isn't doing its part to help said students achieve their full potential. We'll be back.
My name is Marty Brecky. I'm a parent, and I chair district relations along with Cassie Condon, who chairs communications for Thornton Creek Site Council. We're here speaking on behalf of our community because over the past month, there has been unnecessary confusion, frustration, and animosity at the hands of the district over the principal hiring process. The district promised transparency, community involvement, and a dedication to finding a candidate that would uphold the inclusive values and programming that has made Thornton Creek Elementary the most popular elementary option school in the district. What we received from the district was a confusing survey that didn't align to community value, and when we asked if we could rewrite it, we were told no. When we asked for two interview questions to be added to the, to the interviews, we were told no. We were told an email by the district that the district would meet with our community to determine desired characteristics, and standing here representing our community tonight, I can tell you that didn't happen. Yet for Bryant, View Ridge, and Wedgewood Elementarys, all of these basic asks were allowed. At our site council meeting last month, we discussed what we wanted in a principal, and it was clear. We hope for a principal that valued a diverse and creative population and program, a principal who didn't just work on IEPs but worked on a community of inclusivity, one who saw and valued option schools as a way of meeting all students across the district and closing the achievement gap, one who was ready to invest in expeditionary learning and responsive classroom as a way to meet kids where they are and helping them go beyond their potential, one that knew how to harness the power of an engaged parent community and embrace our shared support model through our site council, one that would challenge and grow our teachers, and one that would continue to fight for expeditionary learning through curriculum waivers and allowing grades to loop. What we received from the district was an email announcing our new principal, highlighting that he had worked abroad, but the email was completely tone-deaf to the values that Thornton Creek community had put forward. So the district has dug a big hole for our new principal to climb out of, but we're here to help. The silver lining in this whole process is that we have galvanized over our community, as a community, over our values, and our community stands united in our core principles. We want our new principal to be a success, we want our option school to welcome him, we want our option school to continue to flourish, and we totally welcome him, so thank you.
After that will be Cassie Condon, followed by Todd Richard Bowers and Isabel Dunaway.
My name is actually Tuz D. My name is Tuz D. Chambers, and I am the Ballard High School librarian, and I am here because of kids. I serve almost 2,000 students at my school, and I am here because I believe in the power of libraries. And we know strong school libraries build strong students. Studies have proven that when spending for school libraries rise better reading scores follow, and test scores at schools with full-time certified librarians are significantly higher. This means that schools are not supporting all of our students in the Seattle School District. We have schools right now without librarians. We have elementary schools with part-time librarians, even though their size is bigger than some middle schools. We have middle schools and high schools without funding for books or technology. We are not serving all of our students, not even close. What happens if you have resources? Resources like a full-time librarian. Resources like equitable funding for all students regardless of where your geographic location is. Resources like technology for all students to meet 21st century skills. And due to budget cuts in the past, services and support to libraries has been slashed. But we can change this. You can change this. If we want to build strong students, we have to build strong school libraries. So today, I'm inviting all of you to come to Ballard High School, to meet with the students, to meet with the teachers, to come to the library, and to have these conversations, to be part of this plan, and to be part of us moving forward to build strong schools, strong libraries, and strong students. Thank you.
Cassie?
Marty and I gave a joint statement, so I'm giving my time up. Thank you for your time.
My name is Todd Bowers. I'm the parent of a first grader and a third grader at Thornton Creek Elementary School. Thank you for-
Could you hold the microphone?
Sure. Usually people don't have to say that to me, but sure. My name's Todd Bowers, I'm the parent of two small children that go to Thornton Creek Elementary School, and I'm a proud supporter of our public schools. I'm here to speak tonight about the principal change at Thornton Creek. What I'd like to do is read into the record an email that all of us parents received this afternoon from Assistant Superintendent Mike Storowski, and I think it's important to read it into the record. I'm not sure you have heard this, so-
Excuse me, excuse me. Time out, please. Are you going to be naming any of our personnel?
No, ma'am, I will not.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
We've got to be really clear on this.
Understood.
Thank you, sir, and I can tell you that we have, in fact, received the email-
Okay.
-this afternoon, each and every one of us.
Then what I'll do is just read a couple of highlights, if I might.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Thornton Creek Elementary has become a leader in SBS for its expeditionary learning focus under the leadership of Principal John Minor. Mr. Minor, along with past and present staff, has worked with the parents of and community of Thornton Creek to create a great culture and curriculum we expect to continue. The hallmarks of Thornton Creek, such as expeditionary learning, will continue to be supported by central office leadership. We have heard concerns from some in the community and want to clarify the following. First, there are no plans to shift away from the expeditionary learning focus. Second, the district has no plans to close Thornton Creek as an option school in the Northeast Region or make it a neighborhood school by getting rid of expeditionary learning. So I want to thank Mr. Storowski and the district for going on the record and committing to continuing Thornton Creek as an option school and continuing to support the expeditionary learning model that we use. Why is it important? It's important because, as a group of parents, we were extremely concerned about the principal change. We've seen what's happened with principal changes at other option schools when they've lost their programs, so it's critically important for us to have received this reassurance. We are very appreciative of that. We would also ask the school board members to commit to continuing to support our model at Thornton Creek as an option school. And the last thing I'd like to say is, of course, if, if Mr. Gaspar is our principal, we will gladly work with him and support him. That's what our community is all about. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
All right. So if educational tracking is unjust, then what's the alternative? By having one untracked set of standards for grade level performance, all students will have the opportunity to learn together. It is true that not all students will have the necessary skills and background knowledge to meet grade level standards, and in those cases, gaps need to be identified and addressed holistically and ongoingly from K through 12. It is also true that some students will find simply meeting their grade level standard to be unchallenging, and these students need to be pushed to find more interesting, challenging, and engaging ways to apply the material they are learning. By identifying where each student starts out relative to the standard, it is possible to engineer a classroom environment and curriculum that can both challenge and support its students as needed.
A truly integrated classroom has much more promise for reducing and eliminating the achievement gap between different racial and socioeconomic groups. It better engages students who are gifted in some subjects but may struggle in others, and perhaps most importantly, it allows all students to experience the, and benefit from a diverse, sorry, it allows all students to experience and benefit from the full diversity of backgrounds that are, and perspectives that are found in our district student population. Though this approach, we are, through this approach, we are creating not only academically capable students but successful, well-rounded citizens. Thank you.
Next up, we have Brian Terry, followed by Cecilia Lehman and Rebecca Weinke.
Thank you for supporting equity in advanced learning. Today, a white student is 20 times more likely than a Black student to be identified as highly capable. This is because the program is based on an outdated definition of giftedness that excludes underprivileged students. The resulting highly segregated classrooms send a clear message to all of our students. White students are more capable and more deserving. This is nowhere more obvious than at Thurgood Marshall, where HCC classrooms sit next to neighborhood classrooms. I have heard that on the playground, students from the mostly white HCC classrooms are referred to as the smart kids. One can only imagine what they call the students from the mostly Black neighborhood classrooms. District staff complained that they cannot unbiased the program because the service model is too rigid. The solution seems simple. We ask teachers in all of our neighborhood classrooms to serve students with a wide range of academic needs. By asking HCC teachers to do the same, our program can expand to include highly capable students who are underprivileged, twice-exceptional, English language learners, those advance in only one subject, and those who excel in art or music. This will allow us to desegregate our HCC classrooms. Once we do this, our students of color will get a very different message. All of our students are smart kids, and we are doing our best to help each and every one of them to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cecilia Lehman. I'm a parent at Pathfinder K-8. I signed up to speak about some of the many issues that our parents are experiencing due to transportation busing issues. First, I want to start by saying that we did have some district staff reach out to us and come to our PTSA meeting last night and talk to our parents. This was very meaningful to our parents who are experiencing problems, and they appreciate that the district is reaching out to us. And while one meeting does not solve this very large issue, we do have parents who are now asking, okay, what is the next step, and being able to look forward. I want to highlight some of the greatest concerns our parents have of some of the issues they have experienced. We have routes at our school that are chronically late. One parent said that their route is cursed. Many parents have given up. Parents are understandably upset when the district goes on and on about attendance, but they can't get the buses there on time. We understand that the root of this problem is largely the driver's shortage, but this is a great issue to our families who depend on the busing to get their kids to school so they can get to work and where they need to be. Safety is also a very great concern. Recently, one parent had a child who missed their drop-off, and instead of returning to the spot to let her off, they just stopped a few blocks past her stop and had her walk home on an unfamiliar route. Training of drivers is a very big concern to our parents. With the driver shortage, it seems that new and untrained drivers are being sent out on routes unprepared. They may technically be licensed to drive a bus, but they are not ready for a solo route. Last night, a couple solutions were floated. One was possibly the idea of opting out, and some of these solutions may require board policy changes. Opting out was the idea that if parents don't need bus service, they could actually opt themselves out, so to help consolidate the routes and make them shortage. themselves out so- to help consolidate the routes and make them shortage, shorter. I did talk to a couple parents at our school, and while I can't talk for everyone, parents who use consistently before and after-school care five days a week may be open to this idea. One option that parents were not happy with was an idea of optmatic- opting out. There are many more things that I can't get into this two minutes, but we do look forward to looking- working with the district in the future to help us solve this problem.[625.72][625.72](applause)
After Rebecca Weincoop, we will have Kimberly Lois, followed by Amanda Roach and J.K. Burwell.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Weincoop and the librarian at Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. I have the absolute honor of entering a school building and teaching in a library each day that was built as a palace. Our library sits physically and pedagogically at the center, the heart of our school. I work for a principal who had the wisdom to hire a librarian to the design team. I work collaboratively with teachers who understand that multimodal literacy is at the core of all of our learning, and I get to spend each day with passionate, curious students. Our library is full of more than 18,000 brand-new books. Our 730 students check out an average of over 3,000 books each month. We have one-to-one iPads, two-to-one laptops, 3D printers, collaborative LCD screens, a maker's space, plenty of comfortable and flexible furniture, and we have a full-time librarian. Our library- in our library, you'll see co-taught lessons across all disciplines. You'll see student-led book clubs, and students clamoring to the front of the room to feverishly grab new books. You'll see that this year, over 25,000 votes were cast in our first-ever March Book Madness, and that the 57 bus was overwhelmingly chosen to represent the reading lives of our Ravens' readers, a devastatingly true story of a terrifying attack that speaks to our human desire to find right through restorative justice. You'll see students working independently and in small groups. You'll see over 200 students each day choosing to spend their lunchtime in our library. All SBS students need and deserve the same level of new and engaging literature, flexible and appropriate technology and facilities, and a full-time, trained, and educated librarian. We already know that gross inequities exist in our libraries across the district. I'd like to leave you with this paraphrased from one of my favorite writers. We don't need little changes. We need gigantic, monumental change. Our school libraries should be palaces. The competition for the best teacher librarians should be fierce. Our libraries and all the resources they provide should be incredibly expensive for our school district and absolutely free and accessible to our students, families, and teachers every day and every hour our schools are open. School libraries serve every student, teacher, and family. Libraries are the silver bullet. Our libraries are everything. Thank you.
Thank you.[782.57][782.57](applause)
I would say that instead of working for your principal, you work with your principal. Words matter. Thanks.
Kimberly Lois. Amanda Roach. After Amanda, we will have J.K. Burwell, followed by Craig Seashells and Naj Ali.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Roach. I'm a Daniel Bagley Elementary parent and the school's teacher librarian. Last May, I applied for and was offered my dream job. I work in my neighborhood and at my child's school. I walk to work most days, and I enjoy the beauty of Green Lake from my library windows. Most importantly, I'm doing what I love. I connect students with books, information, and learning by engaging with their interests and opening up their choices. I see each and every student in our school on a weekly basis, and most, more than once a week. I learn their names and their reading habits, their stories, and their struggles. For example, I know that many of our students are unable to access their local public libraries for a variety of reasons. By underfunding school libraries, our district is showing that closing the achievement gap is not a real concern. My position's FTE, some of which is supplemented by our PTA, has been cut for two years in a row now, despite the fact that total FTE in the school has gone up dramatically this year. When my principal asked the district if she could use the new K through 3 class-size reduction funds so that I could specifically serve K through 3 students with my additional time, the answer was no. It didn't have to be used for classroom teachers or even just K through 3 students, but it couldn't be used for more librarian FTE. It's demoralizing that solutions for funding libraries continue to be rejected. Despite having my dream job and loving my school community, I'm already looking elsewhere for a district that shows it loves its librarians by funding full-time librarians in every school. According to my recent research, Shoreline, Edmonds, Lake Washington, Mercer Island, Renton, Toquilla, Highline, and Bashan all employ full-time, certificated librarians in every elementary school. It's a problem that this district's excellent, experienced teacher librarians have to keep fighting each year to provide library services to SBS students. I'll see you soon.[938.69][938.69](applause)
Hi, my name's Craig Seashells. I'm a teacher librarian, too. And as you say, let's look to solutions-oriented work. Last time we, at the beginning of School Library Month, we were able to hear from everybody about the importance that libraries play in individual students' lives and also in the life of a school. And for solutions-oriented, the legislation that did pass the legislature, 6362, will be a major piece of financial planning on the part of the district because the legislative intent is line-item clear: $20 per FTE for school library materials, period. And so I know that takes a lot of work downtown, but what a solution to a problem and an equity-oriented solution for every student in Washington State. I would like the board and the administration to revisit the Gold Book decision, the weighted-staffing-formula decision, that removed the teaching of educational technology as a PCP option. As schools have lost those positions in PCP funding, they may only be reinstated as art or physical education, and as every bit as important as those two aspects of a student's life is. Success in academic achievement in 2018 may involve information technology and additional instruction, and a .5 PCP would solve the halftime elementary librarian problem. Put information- library and information technology programs on a full-time basis in our schools, and please readdress the Gold Book problem that cropped up for good reason but has created a problem for our students. Thank you very much.
Can you-
Yes, ma'am.
Have you met with our Assistant Superintendent for Budget and Finance regarding the gold standard regarding the apportionment of those dollars?
I've appreciated the invitation two years ago after testimony, but that did not happen in that summer. And I know that our new library supervisor is speaking with finance about some of those implications, and I'm helping advise her according to what the Library Association perspective is. So I'm trying to participate, and I welcome the invitation.
If you could spend some quality time so that the board gets the feedback back as to those conversations, it would be very much appreciated.
And as you say, this is a "with" conversation.
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much.[1121.42][1121.42](applause)
Naj Ali. Eric Curtis Feeney. After Eric, we will have Essens Robertson and Jennifer Allen.
Hi there. My name's Eric Feeney. I'm a PTA from Green Lake Elementary. This is my first such meeting. It's very energizing. A lot of great work happening here, so super exciting. Our- my issue feels a little localized, but it's still important to my community. We've sometimes got a little bit ahead of ourselves. We've raised a decent sum of money to improve our playfield facilities from the community, and sport and physical health is very important to us. Our grass area where we used to have has been replaced by portables. Now we only have the sea of asphalt. We understand it's the current policy of the school system that turf fields are not allowed for elementary schools, but we are willing to assume current and future costs and hassles associated with the project. It is our ask that the system come to the table in a capacity to help us figure out how to make it work, not with a list of reasons why it can't. You know, we are an educational facility and trying to teach people how to solve problems and take things forward. So we are a very engaged community. We will have- there's a part of our fundraising that is meant to- apportioned proportionally to give to other districts that aren't so fortunate as we are. So we- you know, I think that there's a way to engage the community, keep the money in the school system, things of that nature. So I'm just asking for your help and to kind of help the policies and the guidance for the employees to kind of look for solutions, not for citing the reasons why things are challenging. We understand that there's a lot that you're working on, so we understand. But we're willing to do work. We're willing to help. Please just help us find a way to accomplish our goals. Thank you.
Could you and Associate Superintendent Herndon and Community Engagement, Mr. Bush, go out and exchange information so that you can start that conversation?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Essens?
Hi. You have to forgive the sunglasses. I'm slightly concussed. I'm here to support two agenda items. One is the renovation of Rayner Beach High School. We will attend every meeting and plead with the directors to keep your central office accountable for keeping us on the Bex 5 and first on the list. They make the decisions before it gets to you. We need to get every word they've displayed on their proposals as it seems to spew inequities, and then they blame the directors for their injustices. They have not done a good job in facilitating the Bex 5 meetings in the Southeast because they could not explain how they are using an inequity lens when deciding which schools are built first. The parents are very disappointed that they could not come prepared. Second, the family support specialist position under the Family Support Program who created senior pods has served all of our students and families for at least for the last seven years at our school and is at risk of being cut because the school district is trying to do away with the program. The services this position provided to all our seniors are responsible for the increase in graduation rates at Rayner Beach High School. I mean, why would you take that away? Why would you take something that valuable away from our community? Doesn't make sense. In addition, she has helped and a lot of families who were homeless or on the verge of being homeless with valuable resources. She serves as the McCanning Ventoh license as well. There are too many amazing things this position has blessed our students with, and I will be sending letters from the supporting families, students, and community members. We, the students at Rayner Beach High School and its community, are asking the district to save the family support program by placing them on the district baseline budget or ensure this program is not being closed by central office in Seattle schools. The central office has recreated the will by creating other job titles that are very similar to the family support workers or specialists. And just a reminder, repaint does not equal renovation. Thank you.[1405.73][1405.73](applause)
Jennifer?
Yeah, that's true.
All right, that concludes the public testimony list for this evening.
Okay. With indulgence of my colleagues, we're going to continue with board comments. Then we're going to take a short break. Then we'll move to action item, including but not limited to signing a superintendent contract. Would you like to go next, Director Gary?
I would.
And then Director Burke.
Thank you. And I wanted to catch Essens before she left and remind, it's still our policy to allow students, when they identify themselves as speakers, to be moved to the top of the list so long as they called in within that first 25 people. So when you call in students and you want to speak to us, identify that you are students. We don't do that?
Top 20.
In the top 20. Not so- Essens. And when students want to testify, you should identify that you are students testifying, and if you call within the first 20, you will be moved to the top so you may speak first. We recognize that you may need to go home, get going on your homework, and that sitting late into these meetings isn't necessary. But that is a policy, and I wanted to let all the students here because I'm so happy to see you, and I want you to know that we extend that privilege to you to show our appreciation for your participation. Oh, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for speaking. Okay, so, thank you, everybody, for coming. I want to thank our Ingram representatives. I think they're gone. And Isabel and- I wrote down your names here. Isabel and Christine, thank you for coming. This is Isabel and Christine's third year coming to testify to the board. And I just- I mean, I get- seriously, I get emotional seeing them. I feel like I've watched them grow up. I can't believe they're going off to college, and they probably won't be here next year. It makes me kind of weepy. And then this year, you're not fighting for the saving your school, which we've always loved, but you're here fighting a battle that I think, as you heard, Mr. Terry, is one that is really- it's becoming important to everybody here, that we recognize equity in our educational offerings is important to you, our students, that you- even the students from Ingram said it. Everybody says it who goes to our high schools. They don't like to see those divisions. They do recognize that that is an institutional problem. That is not a problem inherent in our people, in our students. Every student can learn. We heard that from Mr. Perry, from Nova. You have to have that relentless belief that every student can benefit from a great education, and you are going out becoming teachers with that belief. And it kills me. I love it so much. Anyway, thank you for coming. All right. Well, that gets through a lot of what I wanted to say because it is so important, the inclusion piece and the non-tracking piece. And I want to say this, we are forming task forces, and we see that. And I want to make sure that we are including students in our task forces. And I want to make sure that we are not just saying "a student," because I don't think it's comfortable for "a student" in a district of 54,000 students to have to come into a room of adults and teachers who are well-versed in the process, nor can you probably, as one student, attend every single scheduled meeting because you may have midterms tomorrow. You may have a sporting event that you need to be at. We need to create for our task forces cohorts of representative students from around our district to communicate on their own, away from the group, to create a message that you then feel empowered and supported in speaking to the power that you see before you, that we- in the structure that we have created. It's time for that change. We are on the cusp of a huge change between the people that were and the people that are going to be. And you see that, you feel it, you want it, and you have to lead it. And so we need to make that structure for you. And I will just say, anything that comes before me that says "task force," I will say, "How are we going to structure this to be realistic in incorporating a student voice?" So, thank you, and that's my pledge to you. I've visited Eckstein Middle School and have been doing so regularly. I think middle schools are a great place. Mr. Principal Perry mentioned how ninth grade is a real indicator- or no, the African Advisory Committee mentioned how ninth grade, one or the other. How ninth grade participation is a real indicator of what's going to happen. And let's face it, what's happening in ninth grade was greatly informed by what happened in middle school. And so I think sometimes we forget that. We look at statistics that start at ninth grade. We look at statistics that talk about third grade. But what's happening in middle schools is a time that we all have to really wrap ourselves, our mind, around those kids to make sure that they're entering high school not to feel alienated. So I've been spending time going to my middle school. And to that end, Dr. Jones and I are going to visit Eckstein this week on a listening tour where we are going in and asking questions of the students and allowing them to talk to us pretty open-endedly. And we're pledging to do that as one of our initial steps in really trying to figure out the best way board- and I know our board members all celebrate that work, so stay tuned on that. We so appreciate what you do, and we, we will continue to look for ways. And I, I encourage you to keep showing up, because top of mind seems to get things done. Thank you for the Thornton Creek community for coming and acknowledging that you received a letter that reassured you. I apologize for the tone deaf letter that went out, because I think that Thornton Creek is a community that I personally love. And I'm so proud to have it in my district as a place that has really fought for a very inclusion perspective around kids of all different kinds of abilities. And, and so, to get a letter that doesn't acknowledge, um, you as a community, when you have fought so hard to maintain that sense of identity, I understand how that feels. It feels like if you cannot be acknowledged for who you are, then what was the process that was used? Was, were sincere? Did people do what they say? Do they know who they're talking to? Do they know how important expeditionary learning is? Since you showed up at my meeting on Tuesday, I have had several long conversations with staff. And yes, it is important. And yes, that letter was a mismatch, and so, we all extend our apologies for that. And what I would like to do, and I'm so thankful that you're saying you're going to welcome your new principal, because everything I've heard about him, he should be an easy person for you to welcome, and that he is indeed very excited about expeditionary learning. And Helen Young is very excited about your project-based learning environment and looking for ways that we can support it and potentially grow it throughout our district. It, it is a model that works, and we're excited about at least fostering it at Thornton Creek. So, know that. And then, maybe as soon as the new principal is installed, I would like to come and visit with Helen, myself, and the principal, talk about our commitment to expeditionary learning, and then take questions from you to see if we can continue that conversation about how we continue to make Thornton Creek the best community for all of your members. So, that's my, that's my, my thing for you. Um, okay, and then I'm continuing to have my Tuesday morning meetings. Thank you for everybody who shows up. And I think the only other thing is that we do have only a couple months left until Seattle's going to be sponsoring the National Special Olympics. We have things posted now on our website, and so, please go on and look for ways to volunteer and participate. We're being called, Seattle is the city of inclusion, and so, there are lots of opportunities. There's choir, there's rooting, there's volunteering. We're going to have a great thing for the second through, no, two-year-old through seven-year-old at the Seattle Center that everybody can participate in, that will create a lot of community for our families with very young kids with developmental disabilities, but a great networking opportunity for them to get supported and understand what it means to be part of a greater community in support of our kids. So look for that, and please go online, and please volunteer, join in. Thanks.
Director Burke?
I will also go through the thank yous and maybe repeat a couple of them, but quickly. Dr. Mark Perry from Nova, it's always great to hear about the successes and the, you know, the values that underlie them. Liam and Ronan from Ingram, as, you know, the comments that they made around the inclusivity and just the general feeling of, of welcome at the school. As a parent who's put three kids through Ingram, I, I can, I can concur, my, my kids all had really positive things to say about the, the school, and having it not be as, as clicky as, as others that, was how they called it out. One of the concerns that, that Liam had raised was around the, the counselor caseload. And I just want to emphasize that that is something that we are taking on as a district, putting career navigators in each high school. Um, you know, that work is, is underway right now. I believe that most of them have, were in the process of selecting. Um, I don't know exactly when that will implement, but, um, thank you to the librarians as well. It is good, you know, to have your, your, your message in front of us and continually reminding us not just of the challenges, but also specific solutions and how we can leverage state funding and our funding formulas and, you know, finding, finding the ways that we can, we can work the couch, couch cushions properly. I want to, I want to give a special shout out to, to the AMAC and, and Mr. Anthony Schucraft for his inspirational words. You know, Director Geary said afterwards, like, "Feels like a party." And it truly does. Um, I've said this a couple times, that before I started as a board director, a former school board director from a different district told me that if you want to do anything in education, you have to be insistent, consistent, and persistent. And the African-American male task force has, has done that in a way that is also just super inspirational. So I want to, I want to thank you for that, because it's, it's helped me get up to speed on a lot of issues that, you know, as a middle-class white guy, I, I honestly say I did not have the perspective or insight, and I'm, I'm trying to come along on that journey, so I appreciate that. As far as activities, it's been a busy month with, with the superintendent work, the Bex work, high school. We had a, a meeting, Mayor Durkin hosted a meeting last week at the Seattle Central College around workforce development and, and career readiness. And it was interesting, you know, the, the city is uniquely positioned, sort of at the hub of, of industry and also as a partner with us in, in education, to how do we get our kids into, um, career pathways? How do we get their interests early? And, and so, creating that bridge has just been an ongoing conversation. And what was fascinating, there were, there were representatives from employers, from labor, of, and, um, our partners at Seattle College, Port of Seattle, just a variety of different stakeholders. And what was fascinating is, as they're conversing with the mayor about recommendations for how to engage students and build career pathways, the vast majority of the things were actually on, in, in the K-12 to-do list. And so this is an, an important area, and people are really passionate about it, but it's one we're not funded for. So I want to just call that out. Important work, lots of exciting work, necessary work, unfunded work. And this is where we're looking at partnerships and trying to build that out in a lot more robust fashion. I, another, another sort of CTE plug, I, I went to the Roosevelt High School Vocational Advisory Committee meeting. This happens every month or so, and I want to put, I want to call out some staff and thank Jane Hendrickson for coming to that meeting and helping us, uh, helping the, the Roosevelt team with some of their facilities challenges. For about five or six years, they've been trying to take down a wall to combine two rooms. One is a, is a shop space and one is more of a storage space, and they want to combine them to make a single safer space. But it's been sort of one of those projects that's been stuck in the middle. And so, I, I really thank Jane for helping understand how to navigate that through the processes, and I, I'm, I'm hoping that that's something that can yield some progress in the next year. Um, whatever your name is, Director Mack, sort of, sort of stole my thunder with the, the Lincoln Community Meeting. So I just want to say, 16 months to opening, and, um, it's true. So, it's going to happen. It's, you know, 16 months, and we've got Link's gear. That's, uh, I was going to wear it, but I thought, you know, for the photos, it might just be too, too, too high school. And so, you'll see it in, in rotations, honestly. So, Principal Metzger shared, um, update on some of the vision, some of the work that's happening. Staff has been identified, select staff for, I believe, language arts, social studies, Spanish, music, front office. These are people that are currently working in other, other buildings, but are, are helping out on a stipend basis to get things off the ground. She shared preliminary course offerings, and, uh, and there's a lot of excitement in the community. So I just wanted to thank staff for that support and to Principal Metzger for helping get that going. And a heads up to the CNI team that it's pretty likely in the next year that we'll, there'll need to be some work done around course approval. I think some of the things that are being talked about will be, will probably need to be courses evaluated by the board. My next community meeting, Saturday, May 5th, 3:30 to 5:30 at Fremont Public Library. Hope to see you there.
Director Batu, and then Director Pinkham.
Thank you to the African-American male for their presentations. It's actually great to hear that there's a lot of great work that's going on in that area. Also, want to congratulate Franklin High School for the, their librarian, Quinn Longhertz, for, uh, her partnership with Xbox Robotics. I think that's great. It's, uh, when you think about robotics, you think of all kinds of way of creativity in terms of actually creating a robot. And, um, and more power to her. Also, I want to say thank you to Nova School for sharing your work on EOG and positive adult beliefs. I think it's always great to hear that there's great things happening in, in connection with EOG in various schools, and, uh, and I really appreciate what the students at Nova share with us today. I really am, wanted to say that, uh, there's a question that's been asked by many students at Rayner Beach High School, which is, when is Rayner Beach going to be renovated? That's an ongoing question, and actually, I was down there visiting yesterday, and that, students asked me that same question. And I have told them, I said, "Well, at the board meeting, I will ask that question. When is Rayner Beach going to get renovated?" That's something that we've talked about for months, I think for years. And hopefully that, uh, that we can get an answer soon. I don't know who actually I need to talk to in terms of getting that answer, but I would like to know, when is Rayner Beach High School going to be renovated? And, uh, looking forward to hearing an answer, so I can share that with our communities and our students who are waiting to find out to see when is that going to happen. My next, uh, community meetings, my community meetings are usually at the end of the month. It's on a Saturday at the end of the month, the last Saturday of the month, and usually, I have it down there in, uh, Sewett Park. And it's usually at nine o'clock to 11:00. Anybody who wants to come, would love to have you. And, uh, it's, uh, usually, we have breakfast in the morning, and then we get on with our meetings. So, uh, because we usually start early in the morning, and it's always wonderful to actually, to be able to share a meal with, uh, with community members, and we can actually be able to be calm while we're eating and share what they have in mind in terms of moving forward in various areas in our community. I'm really, um, excited about Franklin High School and their Xbox Robotics. I'm not really into that, but, you know, it sounds really, uh, exciting. So, hopefully that, um, I can go down there and visit and see how that all comes together. But, um, my next, uh, community meeting actually will be the end of this month. It's usually on a Saturday, and, oh, I did, uh, I just want to remind them. And usually, it's, uh, it's not very long. Usually, we talked about what's more important, and then we move on. So, if you're not doing anything on Saturday, I would love to see you. Have a great day.
Pinkham?
Good evening. First of all, yeah, definitely want to give a shout out to the African-American Male Academy for the work that they did, because I know there's a lot of people that are, I don't know how many people, but people that I heard is like, "What are they doing? What are they doing? When are we going to hear from them?" But it was great to see the number of people here that was representing on the board. And one of them is a coworker of mine, which is kind of scary, because he brought our boss here to this meeting, and it's like, "I snuck out of work to get here, and now he's tracking me down." But, you know, again, just wonderful work, and, and I think a lot of people were thinking that they're just going to concentrate on African-American males, but what they shared tonight, no, it's going to go beyond that. We're going to impact all our students. And particularly happy to underserved students to get them the attention and respect that they deserve. You know, I think that's what our students miss sometimes, that, as we were saying, if they don't have a teacher adult that believes in them, they're going to fall through the cracks. So, having someone, a teacher to believe in them, African-American handed, thank you for all the work that you've done. Look forward to the future work, and guess, uh, what, let's see what we can do to get them on a work session for, uh, the board here, and we very much appreciate it. Thank you to Neil and Ronan for, from Ingram High School and other high school speakers. Keep sharing your voice. And thank you for wanting to become a teacher. Hey, all right. Hopefully you can stay here in the Seattle area and, and say, "Yes, this is where I grew up. This is the school I went to," and walk the halls and share memories with your students, and, uh, keep it going. Encourage other students to think of education as, uh, definitely a profession. I know that's actually where I was leaning towards when I was going to school, but unfortunately I had parents that said, "Education doesn't pay anything." Uh, don't, if you're going to become a math major, go be a computer programmer and get paid for it. But I took the long way around, now I'm back in education. But, as I said, keep it up, share your voice, and if there you see changes that need to be made, you're in the classroom seeing what's happening. You're just being aware of the demographics that you see in your classrooms. Let us know. You know, we'll, we'll hear some anecdotal things, but when you come and tell us, thank you, it's appreciated. So, uh, and when you graduate, still come back, okay? Let's see, uh, also, I'm making an announce, announce it, uh, kind of in line with, uh, African-American Academy, the Office Minority Affairs at the University of Washington, celebrating their 50 years of existence. And they came into being after the assassination of, of Martin Luther King, and they said, "We need some services for our underrepresented students." So, uh, just want to let people know, on May 17th, Dr. Emile Petrie will give an, a brief, uh, talk on the history of the Office Minority Affairs. I think it'd be a good event for people to attend. During this spring break, the Clear Sky Native Youth Council did have a Good Medicine Conference April 12th and 13th at Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. Thank you to the principals at Robert Eaglestaff and Lipton Springs for letting us in their use of resources. Mateeka Wilber, I got to see her, listen to her speak, but Ms. Lick Watson and his son, uh, they were there the day before, but it was terrible, about a good turnout, about 80 to 100 students, or not students, about 800 people, uh, attended that two-day conference, and I appreciate, uh, the efforts that they go through there to do that. Coming up on the U-Dub campus as well, for our native youth here in Seattle, the Society of Chicanos and Native Americans in Science, University of Washington chapter is having a Native Youth Mentorship Day. That's May 7th. Again, if you need more information on this, just send me an email. Hope I get you connected with that group. Thank you to those that, you know, definitely come here about the issues with Robert Eaglestaff, and, uh, and I do not want you to forget, Lipton Springs is there too. And yes, that's something that we're going to have to address and see how we can make sure the space is being treated right. You know, did the boundaries not adjust accordingly when Lipton Springs went in there? What other opportunities do we have to make sure that both schools feel safe there? And with Cascadia next door, it is a site that is going to be, uh, capacity strained, and, uh, what can we do to address those needs? So, yes, that is on my, uh, things to do to follow up on. Librarians, keep it up. I know that when I was in grade school and high school, the library was kind of sometimes a place to go and hang out and get the information that you needed, but back then it was the Dewey Decimal System. So, uh, going to libraries today, it's like, go to the computer, type something in, the title. So it's definitely things that we need, and it is, you know, how do we get that into our budgets? How do we make sure that we have the funding and resources we need to provide full-time librarians, full-time counselors at our schools? My next community meeting will be this Saturday from 12:30 to 2:00 p.m. at Northgate Library again. So if you can have any issues, don't have to be in District 1, uh, please come out wherever you're at and, uh, share your perspectives, and I'll be sure to pass it on to our district staff and see what we can do to get some answers and clarifications that may be needed. Uh, I also need to announce, I guess I can do it here, that I will not be able to make the May Ops meeting. I mentioned at the last one, I wasn't sure if I would be able to make there or not. The, the May 10th, I won't be able to make the May 10th Ops meeting. So, I'm looking for any other directors that might be able to fill in for me, because I'll be traveling to New Mexico. Thank you. Katseio.
Director Mack?
Hi again, I took the time before, um, uh, test-
I'll be traveling to New Mexico. Thank you. Katseio.
Director Mack.
Hi again. I took a time before testimony to speak, and I wanted to take a bit of an opportunity to respond to some of the testimony. I, it's my favorite part of the meeting, is hearing what issues are going on for folks and where they, what they care about and how they want to improve things, since I really appreciate you coming. The invitation to the Ballard High Library, Ballard's in my district, and I need to make a visit, so if you could please send me an email with some potential, like, appropriate times that would work, eden.mack@seattleschools.org. I'd love to set that up. On the request around the guiding principles, we are going to have a longer conversation about that, so I won't touch on it here, but I appreciate, you know, issues being raised. And to the issue of the capacity at Eaglestaff and Lipton Springs, we haven't sent an email back out to the emails we're getting around this issue, but I appreciate it coming here, and want to reiterate that we are starting those conversations, and that conversation starts May 1 at 4:30 at our work session, where we're going to be talking about capacity issues. That's one of them, and we're going to start talking about the process by which we will, well, what do we need to do for next year is the first question, and the second question is, how do we start the planning and process for ensuring that every student has a quality learning environment at that building and not being overcrowded? So, we are starting the process. Thank you for your advocacy around it, and please come in and watch the work session on May 1st. So, thank you.
Okay, last but not least, I'll speak fast, and I'll try and keep my comments short. I ditto all the thank-yous, especially to the African-American Male Task Force. This work is so important. It is so profound, and the fact that our community members are holding hands with us and we're lifting up, it matters. It matters greatly, and the targeted universalism addresses some of the criticisms that were made when this task force was started, because it does, in fact, lift all boats. And it is not right to be in such an extraordinarily wealthy city with these inequities every day, every school, every student. It's just not right. My community meetings, this Saturday, April 28th, Saturday, May 26th, both 3:00 to 5:00 at Del Ridge Library, you have a 50% chance now of getting lasagna. And staff are welcome. There used to be some kind of a meme or canard that staff were not to go to community meetings. That's been dispelled quite vociferously. We are paid our buck twenty-five for going and having those meetings as part of our community outreach. It is not political. Can't have it both ways. You can't say it's political and then pay us for it. We did have a staff member, Michelle Aoki, who's been working with the International Schools and the Dual Language Programs. Comeed to my last one, and she had a blast, and she brought her mother. And we talked about things like instrument repair, sped issues, IEP issues, capital, facilities. We talked about how do we address the Alki School that is conjoined with the Alki Community Center and has a very small footprint and has security issues. And the Whaler. We talked about playground enhancements. Most of all, we had a very good rowdy time, and my community members are generous enough to bring coffee and treats. So, if you don't like lasagna, you get coffee and treats, and you get darn good conversation. May 10th, we turned this room into a rocking celebration for the Seattle Public Schools Scholarship Event. Every year, the scholarship committee, with the very generous bequests of other folks, give out scholarships to two young people from each of our high schools, and the stories that they tell of overcoming huge adversity. And I triple-dog dare you not to be extraordinarily moved. It is a celebration, it is a wonderful thing, and I'm pleased to report to you that the scholarship fund now has $1 million in it. And we're always looking for more. So, we have PayPoint on our website. Please contribute. Cities and Family Partnership. As referenced before, we met with the mayor Monday a week ago, and then Monday, the City Council Select Committee. Those meetings are all online, the testimony is online, the feedback's online. There's a great deal of concern about whether or not K-5 funds are going to be cut back, while at the same time, we triple the number of preschool slots, and we enhance high school counseling, career technology, and the Seattle Promise 13th and 14th year. There is perhaps some understanding that McClary has solved our funding issues. I would submit to you, that is fake news. I would submit to you that the conversation continues. If you care about this sort of thing, and I submit that everyone should, be in touch with your city council member. And I see you back there, Mr. Schucraft, working for the city, and I thank you for helping us there very much. Also spent some time with Southwest Youth Family Services, Juvenile, King County Courts, Presiding Judge of the King County Court, Seattle Police Department on April 5th, and it was a profound and deeply disturbing evening regarding drugs, guns, gangs, a couple of recent murders just across the line in unincorporated King County. We can and we must do better. All of the conversation surrounded story, strength, and need in relationships, and whether or not we're willing to put out and make sure that our most vulnerable are protected. Last night, Career Technical Education Expo at West Seattle High School. I saw one of those incredible printers that builds things. I saw some of the most extraordinary artwork. I saw some of the most extraordinary young people, and I saw really terrific marketing materials for our career in technical education. We have arrived, and thank you. I see you, Caleb. Thank you for your help on that. The summer programs are exciting, they're credit-bearing, some of them even include college credits. It is opportunity gift-wrapped, it's exciting stuff. With respect to Rayner Beach High School, Rayner Beach High School is expected to be on the Bex 5 list. I believe that it's always been expected to be on the Bex 5 list, which we will finalize, I believe, in August. I'm looking at Associate Superintendent Hernan, August, September. We don't have enough change in the couch cushions to redo Rayner Beach High School, and this board and the administration has been very, very consistent about that. And short of a natural or national disaster, both would work, I believe that Rayner Beach isn't the front of the line, and I'll fight like...
Is.
Is.
Loud.
Is. I-S, is. And I'll fight like the person that I am to make sure that that stays correct. It is expensive, it's even more expensive to build it side-by-side, so we don't destroy the community and ship folks out of the community, which I know is a high priority. The young people that have come here and spoken time and again, I applaud them, I agree with them, they are articulate, and they are right. It's been too darn long. And I'd like to make a thank you for the thank you. Sabrina, our president of Seattle Parent-Teacher-Student Organization, thank you. This job sometimes truly sucks, but I have to tell you, it also is an honor to work with these good folks. It is an honor to work on behalf of your students. It is an honor to work with very talented staff. Are we 1,000% every day? No, we are not. We make mistakes. But grace is an important thing, and that thank you means a whole heck of a lot, and I, for one, hugely appreciate it, and on behalf of the board, thanks for the thanks. We are now taking a 15-minute break. We'll reconvene at 7:05, so we can sign a superintendent contract, we hope.